What we're going to be talking about is we're looking at our urban renewal area and a discussion around that. And so I will introduce Heather Richards, the Planning Director for the City of McMinnville. She's sent slides out for many of us to follow. I'm sure she'll be sharing that on the screen. But again, I'll recognize that what we're doing tonight is a work session for the City Council to have a further discussion on the urban reserve. And so Heather, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Happy St. Patty's Day to everyone. Lots of people see behind me this little chart and ask me if I'm a bounty hunter or something like that. That's my family tree. And this half of the family tree is all from Ireland. So it's an important night for my family. Anyways, we wanted to come back to you with a work session on our growth program. Specifically, at one point in time, you had given us the direction to look at urban reserve areas. So we wanted to come back and visit with you about that. There's been some, you know, with growth planning in McMinnville, there's been a couple of bumps that have come along, and we want to share those with you as well and potential solutions that we have. Kevin Young from the Department of Land Conservation and Development is also joining us this evening. And then I did send out a notice. It looks like they are here. Two thousand friends. So it looks like Alexis Biddle is here and two friends of EM Hill County. So it looks like Sid Friedman is here as well as we walk through this. We will do like we've done in the past where we just want to walk you through the discussion through a PowerPoint. If you have questions as we go, feel free to ask because this is really more of an informative session. And we'll be looking for some direction from City Council at the end of the presentation in terms of our next steps. So I will share my screen with you.
And as you're preparing to do that, Heather, I just, I will let the other councilors know that Zach had gotten ahold of us and he's not going to be able to be with us this evening. But he said that he would go to the recording and pick up the information shared this evening off of the recording.
Great. So this is a continuation of our Growing McMinnville Mindfully program. Tonight, we want to talk about the next steps, steps for growth planning, talk about our planned urban reserve area work, talk about House Bill 2003 and its impact on our work program. That's kind of the little bump in the road, so to speak. And then what we see is a suggested path forward. So just to bring you up to date, we did submit the UGB remand amendment to the state on December 11. They have until April 11 to render a decision for us. And we did, DLCD did get one objection letter from Jennifer Redmond Noble and Janet Redmond. And so we are working through that as well in terms of the objections in there. Once this is a decision of the director of the LCD, and once they render their decision, then there will be, the objector will have the opportunity to decide if they want to appeal that or not. And the appeal would go to LCDC. To remind you of the amendment, this is important because this is going to come into play later in the conversation. It was two phases. The most recent phase was 662 acres gross net buildable acres. And the first phase was 259 net buildable acres. The overall amendment was to serve, it was to provide approximately 2,500 additional dwelling units, acres of parkland, employment land, and other public and semi-public uses. So when we came to you about all this, we started having a discussion of our overall game plan for growth planning in McMinnville. And we've talked about urban reserve areas in McMinnville for about three years now. As an opportunity to really try to get in front of growth planning here and not be chasing our tails, because the amount of time that's occurred between our last growth plan and today has created a lot of circumstances that we see in the community today, negative trends that we don't want to be seeing. And so we want to get in front of that. And we found an urban reserve area was a great tool in which to do that. And it's a tool allowed in Oregon land use planning. Per Oregon statute, urban reserve areas are meant to ensure that the supply of land is available for urbanization and that it's maintained as being available. And so what the urban reserve area is, it's typically, let's see, it's typically planned land supply to accommodate population and employment growth for at least 20 years and not more than 30 years after the 20-year period for which the district has demonstrated buildable land supply in the most recent inventory determination and analysis performed under RRS. So that's right out of the statute. And what it means is after the city has gone through a UGB amendment, or has determined that they, they know how they're going to meet their 20-year need. And for McMinnville, we just finished that for that planning horizon 2003 to 2023. You can then do an urban reserve area, which looks at land supply for the next 20 to 30 years beyond that. And it identifies where future land supply for a UGB would come from. And it sort of gets in front of those steps of an urban growth boundary process. And in those communities where urban growth boundaries are difficult discussions to have, it really helps to sort of ensure that when the need is there to expand the urban growth boundary, those difficult discussions have already occurred, and the city can move forward with the expansion that it needs. So it doesn't get into a constrained land supply situation. So if you'll see, we've provided you maps from the get-go that had these two boundaries on them. One was the boundary for the UGB study area, which was a one-mile study area. And then we always had another boundary in our work that we were doing, which was a mile and a half study area boundary to look at potential urban reserve area work. In 2019, you directed us to look at an urban reserve area and an urban growth boundary. So we've been mindful of that as we've been putting all our efforts into this and collecting data. The reason why you do urban reserve areas, and again, this is directly out of the statute, is it really allows cities to do long-term infrastructure planning, if you understand where you're going to be growing in the next 50 years, in terms of making sure that your systems can accommodate that. It looks at sufficient development capacity to support a healthy urban economy. So you're not chasing land to bring into your community to support economic development. It allows for long-term planning for schools and other public facilities efficiently and cost effectively. So I think often about this high school site right here, the second high school site. And if we knew where the urban reserve area was, we would know how to place that so that it effectively really serves the community for the long term in terms of future housing development. It can be designed to preserve and enhance natural ecological systems, which I think is important here in McMinnville. When, since we've been under this land constraint, land supply constraints for the last many years, there's been this sort of pressure to build into these natural ecological systems. But if we can get in front of that and do good planning, we can preserve those and look at how to achieve density in other places. And so a long-term land supply allows you to do that. And it also allows you to look at where are there, where are there opportunities where we really want to preserve larger ecological systems that are adjacent to the city and protect from future development. It also allows for walkable, bikeable neighborhoods to be planned more efficiently. And then it includes sufficient land suitable for a range of housing types. So some communities who have urban reserve areas are actually doing a much better job of achieving land use efficiencies and densities than those that don't, because they are able to maintain their growth planning system and grow and accommodate accordingly. So here in McMinnville, when we went through our data study for hazards, we did include that mile and a half study area with the purpose that if we were going to be collecting the data, we wanted to make sure we were collecting it to support a future urban reserve area if necessary. So you might remember some of these maps are very early on, where I always call this the brain, but the brain was bigger than what it was for the UGB study area. And we looked at all the different risks in that regard. And then here is the overall composite map for that. So we have that data onboard now. And then we also did, if you recall, for two years, from 2019 through 2020, we worked on what we call our urbanization report. And the urbanization report is an updated housing needs analysis, economic opportunities analysis, public land need, and then a buildable land inventory. So we were working on that for two years before we pivoted to the UGB remand effort. We did it with a variety of project advisory committees and public open houses. So there's been public engagement in that as we've been putting it together. And the way we put it together was, we wanted to make sure we were achieving the 20-year UGB planning horizon, but also, and that would be right here, so 2041. Our 20-year planning horizon ironically was 2021 to 2041. I'd like to pretend we planned that really, really well in terms of how we were thinking when all this discussion would come to play. We did our best guess, but it has landed where it needs to land in terms of 2021. And then the population forecast went out to 2067, which is a little less than a 50-year planning horizon from 2021. And so we used that for the remainder of the data to put together that analysis, so that we had sufficient data to do an urban reserve area in the future. And then this shows, these are highlights from this report. It's an in-draft form. It was finished in June of 2020. And it shows what our needs are in those two planning horizons. So UGB 2021 to 2041, and urban reserve area, 50 years for single-family detached, attached, and multifamily. So we were working on this when we pivoted in January 2020 to finish the UGB remand. But we were asked to finish this up. This was nearly done, to finish this product in draft form, and then use it for the future urban reserve area work right after the remand was concluded. So we did finish the draft, and then we submitted what we call a PAPA. So that's a submittal to the state to let them know of our intention to have, as a city, to have an evidentiary hearing. So it's a public hearing on this material. And we submitted that to them last year when we were done for our first evidentiary hearing in May 2021. And the reason we did this was, this is based on a population forecast that was updated in July of 2020. It was updated in a three-year cycle, which is the shortest population forecast update cycle. They decided to shorten the one for Region 2 so that the state could get into a cycle where it was going into different regions every year to do these updates. But when we started this work, we didn't know it would be shortened to three years. We thought we had four years. And so we worked with DLCD, and they suggested that we submit the PAPA because that then locks us into this data, and we can use it for future work. So this is done. This effort was about $150,000 to complete. So the other thing we know is that Oregon has, has a housing deficit based on different studies. It's either the worst or the second to the worst. A study that was put out by Freddie Mack in February 2020 identified Oregon as high, Oregon had been the highest deficit of housing in the United States, nearly 9% deficit, followed by California, which is nearly 6%. And this is important because this information's been coming out for a while now. The Oregon Housing Community Services commissioned a report a couple of years ago in 2017. It was released in about 2018 for this five-year Oregon housing plan. And what it said was that the statewide had a housing deficit of approximately 155,000 housing units. And so that's our housing shortage, which is contributing to our housing crisis right now. New studies have shown that if we continue on the same trend, that deficit will rise to 500,000 housing units statewide. So there's been an Oregon Housing Economics Summit for the last two years to talk about this. How do we get in front of this housing crisis in Oregon and, and start to address it? So Councilor Mankey and I both attended the one that just occurred in January of this year. Several of us as a team attended the one last year in person. This year, it was virtual. And they had a panel. And when, and they asked the question of the panel, what is the one thing that cities can do to help with the housing supply shortage? The answer was, they were allowed to pick three things. And each panelist picked three different things, but had one consistent answer in it. And that was that the cities should invest in land supply planning. And they even went so far as to say, most specifically, cities should be investing in urban reserve areas. And the reason for that is that when it is necessary for a city to expand its urban growth boundary, that it can do so in a seamless manner. And it doesn't take several years to get, get to the point of an approved amendment, where the city is now behind the game in terms of housing deficit and supply, which is where McMinnville is today. So with all that in mind, after we submitted the UGB remand amendment, we met with DLCD staff to start talking about what's the next steps for the urban reserve area so we could come to you with that information and game plan, especially with the pivot to the UGB remand. We wanted to know what we should do. However, I just described to you the housing shortage that's been occurring in Oregon. And as you know, in 2019, two big bills came out of the legislative session to try to help address these. One was House Bill 2001, which is often referred to as the Missing Middle Housing Bill, to allow missing middle housing and single-family zoning. So we're moving forward with that right now. The other one, which has gotten a little less play until recently, is House Bill 2003. And House Bill 2003 is very impactful, and very impactful for our discussion tonight. So what House Bill 2003 said, it said, we're going to start looking at regional housing needs analysis. We're going to direct the Oregon Housing Community Services, so that's the housing state agency, to work on a methodology for what a regional housing needs analysis would look like, and how to assign that housing across regions for cities to respond to. So they did that. They did a methodology and just published a report here on March 1. And now the discussion is, the methodology had a report with data in it. So they actually collected data as to housing needs. And now the discussion is, does the legislature move forward with assigning that need? And I don't know where that's going to go. But so that's sitting out here on the side and needs to be resolved. The other thing in House Bill 2003 was this housing production strategy. And we knew this discussion was underway. So we actually have that in draft form in that urbanization report that I showed you. But this is, how are cities going to achieve the needed housing that's in their needs analysis by things other than just land use measures? And so that's looking at the programs that cities can put together. There's, in this bill, it describes several programs that cities have to study. Most of those are in our housing production strategy already in draft form. There's a couple we'll need to amend in there. But I feel pretty good about this piece that we're in front of that. The other thing the bill said was, you, DLCD, Department of Land Conservation and Development, by December 31, 2019, you need to adopt a schedule by which cities shall demonstrate sufficient buildable lands for housing. And so what that's saying is, they're going to assign performance metrics to cities, in which cities will do housing needs analysis and buildable lands inventory, discover their need, and then respond to that need by a certain timeframe. So it's, it's ensuring that cities are doing the work. And then it says, cities shall update and adopt a new housing capacity analysis. So housing capacity analysis is nearly the same thing as a housing needs analysis, just termed differently in this bill. Shall update and adopt a new housing capacity analysis every eight years. So not only you, city, need to do this within a certain timeframe based on DLCD's schedule, but you will also be updating this and submitting it every eight years. Now, to put this in perspective for McMinnville, our last housing needs analysis was done in 2001. And then we just recently went through the second one here in 2019 that we haven't adopted yet.
So Heather, just a question on that fourth question. Are there parameters around the size of a city that have to update and adopt the new housing capacity analysis every eight years? Or is that-
Yeah. So Kevin, if I get this wrong, feel free to interrupt and correct me, but I think it is for cities of 10,000 or more?
That, that's correct. It does, no, actually, that is correct. All cities, 10,000 population above, yeah.
I'm confident we fall into that parameter, Mayor. I just wasn't confident what the threshold was.
Well, and I just wanted to, you know, because, you know, it sets a premise that we're within that, well within that guideline that we need to address that.
Yes, yes. So DLCD did what they were directed to do. They went into rulemaking on House Bill 2003, and they came up with their schedule by December 31, 2019, for when cities need to adopt a updated housing capacity analysis, or HNA, by December 31 of the listed year. And so if you look at this, we are in 2023. So by December 31, 2023, we need to update and submit a new housing needs analysis to the state. If we show need in that new housing needs analysis, we need to say how we're going to accommodate that need as well in our submittal. So the good news is, we have it. We have a draft form, and this needs to be refreshed. But you know, the bulk of the work is done, and it's got a PAPA, so it's preserved. And so that's been done. So, and this has a housing production strategy in it as well. So that's the good news. The bad news is it shows the need for land. So in the updated, and we knew this going into this, and I think our partners, Thousand Friends and Friends, were seeing this as well as we were walking through this process, that the need for land in this work was greater than the need for land in the UGB remand. So our 20-year planning horizon of 2021 to 2041, going through the work, shows a need for about 1,400 buildable acres. So if you go back to our most recent UGB remand, and this includes, so in this buildable lands inventory, keep in mind, this is included in it, Phase 1. So we have Phase 1 already included in this, and it still shows this need. The other thing that's included in this analysis is House Bill 2001, and its directions for assigning capacity. We also use the new rules relative to exception lands and capacity if they haven't been developed in a certain timeframe. And so that's in there as well. So if you take this number and you, you know, subtract this number, which is the UGB remand we just did, there is, there's a demonstration of need. Now, this needs to be much more refined. So I don't want anybody walking out of here thinking you have a deficit of 734 acres. That's what it shows. This is just straight math across the board, and it needs, there's lots of nuances in here. So what it doesn't include is, we haven't really reconciled the UGB remand into this new BLI. We need to do that work. And that could, these numbers could change based on that. The other thing we haven't done is efficiency measures. So that's where we talk about what we can achieve in terms of density within our existing urban growth boundary. And if it's approved, the one we have right now that's submitted, would be within that. Can we achieve, you know, through efficiency measures, all this need? And if we can't, then we'll have additional need, and we'll need to be looking at potentially a UGB amendment. Because when we adopt the HNA and the BLI per this schedule here, December 31, 2023, if we show need with that, we're going to have to address that need. So we found this out about two weeks ago, and I think me and the team all went in this posture. Because we might have to do another UGB in the next two years in McMinnville. You've got to be kidding me. Nobody wants to go down that path, I think, for the most part. So we have been in discussion with DLCD about some potential options, about how to be compliant with House Bill 2003, get our work done, really look at growth planning in McMinnville and do it right. We do, if we have need, we should be responding to that need. So how do we do that right? But do it in such a way that we can, as a community, be thoughtful and mindful and be able to absorb this and not go through such a contentious battle as we have in the past 20 years, you know? I don't think anybody wants to do that again. So I wanted to walk you through the options and then get some direction tonight. There's four of them. Essentially, there's option number one, which is House Bill 2003 compliance. That means do all the work. If there's a UGB amendment that we need, do that as well, and submit it by December 31, 2023. There's another option, which is, we can go to LCDC. So that's the Land Conservation Development Commission. That's like the statewide planning commission, who is responsible for the rules. And say to them, can we amend that administrative rule that puts McMinnville in December 2023 and move us to December 2027 and give us some more time to do that work? And then there's a third option. And this was the option that we, when we were developing this amongst ourselves internally, we fell on and thought this was a good option. And when we had our conversation with DLCD staff, they felt it was a good option for McMinnville as well. And that's to utilize, and no one has utilized this yet, so we would be piloting through this program, the new sequential UGB rules. So what that means is, we would adopt an HNA, EOA, and BLI, and adopt efficiency measures. So we would, we'd be looking at what's our need and how are we going to meet the need by December 31, 2023. And then if there is need for a UGB amendment based on that work, we would then enter into a work program with DLCD to submit that UGB amendment by June 30, 2025. So the sequential UGB allows us to enter into a work program with DLCD that says, we'll get the work done. Here's our, our performance metrics and our deliverables in which to get it done. And it allows us to submit things sequentially, so by components. And then there's the fourth option, which I always need to bring to you because people bring it up all the time in McMinnville, which does do nothing. So we did have a discussion with DLCD, which was, you know what, what if we don't perform to House Bill 2003? We're exhausted. We don't have the resources. This community does not want to have this discussion. We're just not going to do it. What happens to McMinnville? So they looked up the rules, and the rules are that they, which could seek an injunction in the court against McMinnville to get the work done. McMinnville could lose all its discretionary funding it gets from the states, not just funding from the DLCD program, which quite frankly, has had a lot of budget cuts. They don't have a lot of technical assistance funds, though we have benefited from their technical assistance funds in the last two years, to the tune of about $200,000. So we appreciate that. But other discretionary funding from the state, from all the other state agencies.
Go ahead, Remy, if you have a question.
Thank you, Mayor Hill. And Heather, I just want to add, there's some other unintended consequences to that as well, which is, there's been a lot of effort on staff time and resources already spent on doing things like the housing needs analysis, the buildable lands inventory. And that's been work that's been part of a greater process for creating affordable housing. So doing nothing also seems to me in your presentation as though it would take all of that staff time, all of those resources, all of those dollars that have already been spent, and kind of throw them away, because those are all time sensitive. That's all time sensitive analyses. And it's only usable for a given period of time.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to-
So that leads, that's a great segue into our next, I'm sorry.
100,000 down the-
Yeah. And I'll walk you through each option a little bit more in depth as to what it means. And actually, I don't walk you through the do nothing option anymore in depth. I don't think it's the right thing for McMinnville. Because the other thing, outside of our investment and time of what we've already done, growth planning is important in McMinnville. We know that from what we're seeing today with our affordable housing crisis, with housing costs that are rising exponentially. I'm hearing more so now in the last couple of weeks than I've ever heard that houses, houses on the market are getting offers above asking price. There's several offers coming in on them. It's just, it's a market that's pricing people out, families out. And so I don't think that's a direction that we want to move in. So looking at a decision-making filter for the different options, the things that we were thinking about is, how do we get caught up on growth planning with limited resources? So we're behind. We know that. We know our UGB remand was, you know, lesser than need. It was, it meant the, you know, constructs of the law for what, for the project we were working on, but it may not be enough. And we need to do more analysis to figure all that out. How do we put a system in place that future growth planning efforts are not so contentious? So how, how do we set something up so that McMinnville doesn't get into this chasing their tail effect, where things get caught up in the court system or in appeals and remands for years and years and years, and we can't get through the- we can't get through the system to actually get to the, you know, to the needed growth planning that this community needs? How do we set ourselves up so we can get past that? And then how do we prevent the circumstance that we're in now, which is essentially the fact that um land supply constraints are leading to this affordable housing issue and gentrification in our community, because I don't think people want to see it go in that direction? And um, and so how do, how do we get in front of that so that it doesn't occur? And what that means is how long will our land supply we currently have actually last in this community so that we're right behind it with the right growth planning when we run out of land supply again? And we're not in this delay period, because right now, we're not going to see that if it's approved and not appealed. So we, we don't, you know, the future of that project is unknown. Uh, it's still going to get tied up for a long time in the system. If it goes to the Court of Appeals, that could be years. Um, it, but even if it's approved, we're still years away from seeing that land turned into, turned into any sort of development because of all the other planning that needs to take place for it. And we are on our last um entitled subdivisions in terms of development right now. So we still have years in front of us of housing choice. So with that in mind, we went through the options, and this is sort of our review of it for you to consider and discuss. So option number one, the House Bill two thousand and three compliance. I tried to think it through in terms of when it would get done and how much it would cost to get it done, and what were the pros and cons. So this is one where you do the whole thing and submit it by December twenty twenty three. And it assumes a UGB amendment. I'm not saying there is one, but I just, I need to assume it. So based on that, it's a two to three year process. It does build on the work we've already done. So you'll see, we have in here just a refresh for the housing needs of analysis, so the draft work that we've done thus far moves forward. We do efficiency measures. We need to do that. Um, and if the efficiency measures show a UGB need, we need to do the UGB analysis, which you're now familiar with. It will be slightly different for this next round, and then develop the proposals and take them through a public hearing process. So um, and we have to do it in a very quick timeframe. So you'll see these numbers here for the cost of doing those two steps is higher than I have in the other options, because, quite frankly, we will not have the time to invest as internal staff to get it done like we did this last time, based on all the other work we're working on. Um, and this will rely a lot on outside consultants to help us with the work. We have in front of us with the UGB reman project, public facility planning over the next three years to get all that work done as well, and area planning at this point in time. But what it would allow is if we submitted a UGB by twenty, December thirty one, twenty twenty three, we would then have time to do an urban reserve area before that next eight-year cycle. Because keep in mind, what the House Bill says is you, McMinnville, need to submit by December thirty one, twenty twenty three. And then, by the way, you need to be preparing yourself to submit another update by December thirty one, twenty thirty one, which is eight years. But um, in a place like McMinnville, where this type of planning is so contentious, and there's so much back and forth at the local level, all those steps take a long time. So if we could get an urban reserve area done before that twenty thirty one, it may help. So option number two is the um going to LCDC and see if we can push it out so that McMinnville's in twenty twenty seven as a deadline. Um, and this is, you'll see, is longer and a lot more expensive, because we lose all the investment that we've done thus far. So we will be updating all that and doing new work for all of it. Um, and then um, we put um higher costs into the efficiency measures and UGB data, just because we feel it would be more complicated eight years from now, because uh our, I think our UGB land that we have right now will be um developing by then. And so we'd be looking at those BLIs and stuff. And then we won't be into um doing an urban reserve area until twenty twenty eight-ish. Actually, that seems like really early for this work. By deferring it, we're only deferring it for, because this work, it sounds like we can defer in for seven years is a big kick the can down the road thing. But honestly, the work for the HNA and EOA takes about two and two and a half years to get through the the process and the discussion um and into a public hearing process, which we haven't even done yet. So we're starting that fairly early. We're, we're only kicking the can two years from now, because we have to do that work, and then we have to do all this other work. Uh, the pros of this is it will allow, you know, we, we would use a new population forecast, and we would use the new census data. So the, the PSU popu, PSU does the population forecast for all communities. Um, they will be updating it based on a four-year cycle now. That three-year cycle was an anomaly just for that one cycle. Um, and so when they update it for the new cycle, they will use the new census data for that update. So option number three, this sequential UGB, um, looks like it's going to take about, I think, five or six years, and it will actually be the cheapest option for us, um, because we would be able to use the investment we've used thus far. So we're, we refresh the document we have, but we'll use the, the um product we have, the housing needs analysis, EOA, and buildable lands inventory. And then we'll have more time to do the efficiency measures and the UGB work if necessary, so we can rely more on internal staff to do that than external vendors. So I did reduce those costs a little bit to get there. Um, and then what this would do is, you remember, what, one of the questions we had for DLCD was, if we go into the sequential UGB amendment, when does that eight-year cycle start again? Is it from when we adopt the housing needs analysis, or is it for when we meet the need with the UGB amendment that's necessary? And it is from when you adopt the housing needs analysis. So we're still, we'll still be on a December thirty one, twenty thirty one cycle for the next one. Um, but we probably could squeeze an urban reserve area in there before that cycle. We'll be tight. We'll be growth planning that whole time. But if we get the urban reserve area done, it will make the next discussion for UGB easier. The other thing this does is it allows us to get this work done before the current UGB is absorbed, so that we're not in a land supply constraint situation. So um, I detailed out the sequential UGB a little bit more, because that is a staff recommendation. It is also, I believe, DLCD's recommendation. Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong on that, um, just so we understand what it means as a community and city to do that work. So the first step is this urbanization study. We have it in draft form. We invested about, well, in the end, we'll have invested one hundred and sixty two thousand when we refresh it. We have the money to do that in this fiscal year. We have it under contract to do that if we need to with Echo Northwest, because we anticipated we would need to refresh this before our first hearing anyways. Um, and we, and we have the first evidentiary hearing already announced with DLCD for May twenty twenty one. We will not have a final draft to adopt, because we won't have efficiency measures, nor will we be saying how we're going to meet the need. So we still have to work this out with legal counsel, but DLCD staff and uh planning staff believe that what we would do is open that first hearing and then continue at date specific for maybe a year down the road when we get the rest of the work done. Um, so that's done. The next step would be to reconcile the UGB reman work into that urbanization study. And uh, and I would hope to have that done by December, the end of this calendar year, December twenty twenty one. Then we would need to go into a discussion of efficiency measures, and that's the discussion of, do we do more density in the city, or do we need to do UGB amendment? How do we get there, right? Um, in terms of accommodating the need? I think that will be a discussion in this community. Um, so I have an adoption of December twenty twenty three on that, based on the fact we'll have a final product on six months in advance of December twenty twenty three, because it's still, it's adopted, it needs to go through a public process. And um, and then fifty thousand um identified in fiscal year twenty one, twenty two for this work. Um, because upfront, we're going to need some help with consultants as to what the different efficiency measures will yield, and then we'll have, we'll be having our public dialogue about it. The housing production strategy needs to be adopted by December twenty twenty three as well. We have that in draft form. I feel pretty good about that um product. I think we can do that internally for amendments that need to occur.
Heather?
Then if we, yes?
Uh, Councilor Peralta has a question.
Okay.
Thank you, Heather. Um, thank you, Claudia. Um, I, I, I can wait until you finish with your presentation on this slide, but before we move off of this, I do have a question. Or I can ask now. I'll just ask it now.
Yeah.
Can you go back to the previous slide, please?
Yes.
So my question is, um, this, I think, was the only option where you had a likely contested in court, and we didn't really cover that piece of it under this.
Yeah. Um, so actually, I should have had that in all of them, and if I didn't, I apologize. Again, we've been.
You may have, but I only saw it on this one. So, yeah.
I, so all of these are, ooh, well, Kevin might need to correct me on this one, too. These are all appealable, aren't they, Kevin?
I think so. What were the three? I'm sorry. Um, certainly this one is, yeah.
The, so adopting the HNA with, so do, doing the full work by December thirty one, twenty twenty three, meeting the need if there's need.
Yeah.
Um, that's appealable. The sequential UGB is appealable.
Yep.
Um, and then uh asking LCD to change the OARs.
Oh, well, that one, uh, let's see. So if we were just changing the date, um, that would not be an appealable decision, right? Uh, well, ah, that's a good question. So it's a commission decision. I guess I'll have to get back to you on that to be absolutely certain. I, I'll need to give you a correct answer, so I'll have to get back to you on it.
Okay.
Uh, but isn't it true, even if we did option two, that that would, although changing the date might not be appealable, the end product of it would be?
Yes, all the, all the steps are appealable.
Okay, thank you.
I, I, this is Amanda. I'll just chime in. There could definitely be a claim under the APA for anything the commission does. So there is the possibility of litigation. It might not be appealable, per se, but there is an option for some litigation potentially.
Yeah, but I mean, I think to Councilor Peralta's point, when we adopt the HNA or EOA, that can be appealable. When our e, efficiency measures can be appealable, the UGB proposal, if there is one, can be appealable. All, all those options.
I think I got it. This, this doesn't stand out. That's the point.
Right.
In that regard. Thank you.
We're still in the same, we're still in the same process. It's just timing and costs associated with it, I guess, right?
Uh, Chris has a question.
Uh, just playing devil's advocate, doing nothing would not be necessarily appealable in court, would it?
Uh, well, they could, that's a good question for Amanda. So per, per ORS, and I have it, um, Gordon gave it to me, it's one nine seven point three three five. They can seek an injunction against the city in court.
Yeah, I think the focus on appealable versus any legal action being taken, legal action could be taken. Yes.
Against the city with the dire consequences.
Right. Yeah, but not so dire, Mayor, so just for a little levity. I did say, if we don't do anything, will you take over the program? And they were not willing to take over the program.
I have another que.
We did offer it up.
On, on option three, is it correct that we would be the first city to use that uh sequential step process?
Yes, yes.
And, and is DLCD um able to provide any additional funding to help cover the expenses of this process since it's a trailblazer?
Can't make any commitments at this time. I, you know, with our budget situation, eh, maybe in future fiscal years, certainly not this fiscal year. I will say, we are, we are very willing to work with the city of McMinnville to step through this. Um, and we think it will be fairly straightforward. Essentially, it's, it's developing a work plan and a schedule for, okay, here's the different pieces, here's the due dates, and here's, here's kind of our plan for getting, getting it all done.
I, I'm sorry. I, I, I don't mean to interrupt. I, how many millions of dollars have we spent on, on this plan to date, Heather?
Well, the, the plan that we just.
Overall, not, not just the one we've submitted, but the ones that failed and everything else. We're into the millions, aren't we?
Yeah, yeah. I would say now we're probably at one point five million.
So these costs that you're giving us, assume no litigation, they're just the costs of going through the process.
Yeah.
So I.
Every eight years, by the way.
I just want to throw, and, and we're looking at a cuts budget right now um in terms of staffing. So I, I understand DLCD is in a, is in a financial situation also. I'm wondering, has staff considered, um, I just want to throw out as a suggestion that we consider reaching out to Representative Noble and asking if he's willing to use one of his bills, if DLCD is open to it, to ask for specific state financial funding to help offset some of these costs that we've incurred. Um, I, I just think that it's worth it to at least make the ask, and um, because I just feel like we've already put so much money into this that, 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 you know, and, and, and really, it, the last litigation was the state defending it because they had approved our plan. So we've got this new opportunity to be a trailblazer, and I'm just, I, I think it is probably the best plan that you've described, but I'm just concerned that we're going to get burned again on the hook financially. And so if we can get additional co, finances to help offset it, I'd feel a lot better about it personally.
From the beginning, so that, because we'll get burned on the legal defense.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm sure we can.
And because we've had, and because we've had a huge amount of sunk costs already on it. I mean, we've spent millions of dollars on this.
I will tell you, if you talk to other communities, I know Ben has spent about eight million dollars on their UGB project they're working on right now. So it.
But they've gotten financing that we haven't gotten, and they get financing that we don't get. But they get financing that we don't get. I mean, in a lot of different ways. So I just, I just think if we don't ask, we won't get anything, but we should definitely ask.
Yeah.
Especially, Sal, to your point, you know, that we are under the fifty thousand and, and the uh community block granting and some of those.
Exactly.
Mechanisms that other communities uh are able to utilize, we don't.
Exactly.
We're standing on our own.
Yeah, the other thing to keep in mind, because I was thinking about this, too, is, you know, um, oh, well, one, one of the conversations I had with DLCD was the eight-year cycle, which concerns me, because we historically have not been able to get through this process in eight years. And if we're supposed to start all anew again and to, and to, to develop something to submit eight years from now, we're starting that development probably three years in advance of that. So really, in five years, we're starting it after we submitted. And um, you know, if we're in the court system defending our previous work, how do we start new work? If for those communities who can't get through it in eight years because they're constantly defending what they've done, and it's taking more than eight years to defend it, how do you start a new process? I mean, how, how do you, how, how do you work through that? And um, so that, that will be something I'm sure will come up in the future.
That just multiplies the cost that you.
Exactly.
Well, and there's also, there's legal issues with that, because we don't have, we don't have an acknowledged plan to build off of for the next time.
Right.
But anyway, so walking through all this, we'll talk with DLCD of funds. They have been partners for funding and have always been open to discussions if they have the resources. Um, and maybe um Councilor Peralta, we can talk internally about approaching Representative Noble, too. Um, so.
Thank you.
What I wanted to get to you, though, is just so that you know what this looks like in terms of a work program. It, it will be a constant churn. Um, we will, will, if we get the UGB, I did bring to DLCD what I thought would be a good work program performance metric that we could achieve, which was June thirty, twenty twenty five, if we needed to submit a UGB amendment. Um, so if we did do that, we would still have time to do an urban reserve area before our next submittal is due on December thirty one, twenty thirty one. And hopefully, if we can get an urban reserve area booked, we'll, we'll get ahead of the game and start growth planning the way communities should be growth planning rather than chasing our tail. So my goal would be in ten years, um, is that ten, yeah, that's ten years from now, in ten years' time, uh, that McMinnville's actually in a good place for growth planning and not behind the game. Um, so we've caught up. But it does feel like a hamster on a wheel. So with that said, we do need direction from city council, because we do have that looming um PAPA in front of us, where we said we would have our first evidentiary hearing in May on our draft work. And we need to do some work on our draft work. Um, so the question would be, do you want to move forward with option number three, the sequential UGB? Do you want to have another work session so you have time to do? Do you want to have another work session so you have time to digest this and think about it, and then we talk about it at another meeting? If you do want to move forward with option number three, we'll start working with DLCD on, on what that work program looks like, because I think we need to submit it first and agree to it. Not sure we will be piloting that effort, but what we'll do is we'll refresh, refresh the draft urbanization study, we'll reconcile it with the recent UGB remand effort, and then we'll put together a public involvement plan for the efficiency measures, discussion and evaluation, and that would be what we're doing over the next two years. So that is sort of where we're at with our growth planning at this point in time.
Well, as, as is usual, Heather, thank you for taking the complexities and putting them into a presentation that's more understandable for us, and I, and I really appreciate the fact that you've been able to put financial parameters a little bit around some of these things. I, I, I really enjoyed looking at the, the slide, the sequential UGB, and I'm going to, you know, the one thing that hits me very, right now, very squarely between the eyes, is looking at the kinds of monies that we put in, you know, in fiscal year 2019, 20, but then as we go forward in 2021, 23, they're much more manageable costs, and as I've talked to Jeff, and I may call on Jeff, you know, our, our revenue gap is very critical right now, and the intent is that we find other revenue sources, we right-size ourselves on expenditures that we may be in a better shape three to four years from now. And so, again, as I'm looking at the sequential UGB, and I'm thinking that's working along with that option, you know, that option number three, it, in my mind, fits fiscally more in line with where we're capable possibly over the next couple of years. And so I just called on City Manager Towery to, to address that, because he, as you are, Heather, are in the midst of budget lookings, and to give the council a little insight from that perspective. Jeff, if you would be willing to do that, and I, you know, we didn't queue you up for that, but that's something that I see glaring at me.
And do you want me to stop sharing now so everyone can see each other?
That'd be great, Heather. Yeah, that would be. I'll just go back.
Great.
Thank you, Mayor. Certainly, the more time we have to, to plan this sort of workout and stage it, the more time we have to address our long-term sort of structural imbalance between revenues and expenses, so that's, you know, yeah, I could do it in two years or do it in five, I'd rather have five to do it, just to manage the workflow. I'm, I guess, other than just at a really high level, the, the other thing is that as, you know, as we move through the work on the potential creation of a, a fire in EMS district to serve a larger regional area, while we're still moving ahead on that work, that, that could ultimately take at least a couple of years to resolve itself, and so absent any significant legislative reform for the property tax system, we really don't have a lot of great options outside creating a new district to really fundamentally change how sustainable we are from a financial perspective. So, so, yes, a longer-range opportunity with more moderate costs upfront is going to be better to, better from a budget perspective. The other question I have for Heather is, we, we, you also mentioned at the top, other long-range planning activities that we have in the queue, the updating the facilities plans, the subsequent review and potential update of systems development charges, the, the expectation for area plans to be created for some of the land that was identified in the UGB expansion. How does that work incorporate with the sequential option that you put in front of us, and what sort of staff and budget impacts do we expect from those long-range activities as well?
Yeah, so barring any hiccups, you never know, but we've done pretty well so far. We should be able to get through most of the work. Well, we'll, we'll know whether we need a UGB in, in December 20, well, actually, we'll know whether we need a UGB probably in the summer of 2023, but let's pretend we do. We may not, and then we're done, right? And, and we just do the urban reserve area work, which would be great, but if we did need a new UGB, we wouldn't be doing, hopefully, that work in its intensity and with the funding until we had most of the other work done, or at least two big area plans done, and the public facility plans mostly done, we'd probably still have a year left of parks.
I, I'll, I'll bring one other item that's kind of, goes hand in hand with this a little bit, a bit, and, but it comes back to our needs, and we have land available in the West Hills, but a substantial amount of that land is above an elevation of 272 feet, which means that we don't have the capacity from a utility standpoint, from MACT Water and Light, to get water to that. And we had an interesting discussion last night, and we call that Zone Two, and right now we've got a few homes that are in Zone Two, and we've allowed them to put individual pumps to their homes to give them that necessarily 50 PSI and the flow that is necessary, but we have some builders coming to us and saying, you know, we've got land, we have needs, but we can't plot, we can't do any development until we know we've got a source of water, and our water sources work the very best when we are a gravity-filled system. So what we need to be looking at from a Zone Two is having a pump station to get water up to a reservoir, which would be much like Fox Ridge, steel containers that could allow us to grow above that 270, 72-foot level, and those are costs that maybe are looking, coming close to maybe 10 million to do that, and how do you, how do you functionally do that without putting a burden on all of the water users or putting it on just those coming? And so I guess the link that I have is the ability to look at a urban reserve area gives utilities an opportunity to see where our growth might be, and so that we could prepare how we're going to move forward, because these onesie-twosies that are going up on the West Hills, that we're allowing little pumps to go in to keep them with the right PSI, that takes them out of the grouping that have got to pay for something later on. I, I don't know if that all makes sense, but it's just another piece that adds to the need for us to do planning and to understand from a utility standpoint how we're going to move forward in land that's already in the UGB.
Yeah. Long, long-term growth planning, I believe, just, it's able to help communities really be much more efficient with their infrastructure planning and costs associated with it, you're not leapfrogging that planning process. And, and actually, in the end, I think if we ever did a study on this, and maybe it's something DLCD does or Thousand Friends does, I don't know, I do think it would lead to higher efficiencies in city development, because you can do good planning and you're not just chasing it.
Kelly?
Just to add to your comments, Mayor, I mean, that's, most of, oh, that area is also a fairly high hazardous landslide zone and, and liquefaction and stuff, too. I mean, yeah, no, we definitely need a long-term planning. I mean, I've heard discussions about transportation planning, I, I think, you know, having this information to go forward with would provide so much better information for everyone for the future, and I know it's kind of icky, but, I mean, we're at least 200,000 down the road right now and have drafts of the, all three of these documents, so why not? I personally feel like this is the time to push this forward.
Well, as, as you mentioned at the beginning of our discussion, Kelly, we have put blood, sweat and tears to the point where we are right today, and to allow those to lapse and start over again. There's not many of us that have been around when that decision was made to kind of let it sit for a while, because we were out of money and we had a very small planning department that, you know, Doug, bless his heart, did a phenomenal job, and Heather has said that so many times, given the resources that we had in that department, did a phenomenal piece, but, you know, going with that option four of doing nothing just puts us behind, and we are a part of that problem that, that adds to the state being the, having the least housing, more housing needs than any other state in the Union, and we don't want, that's not the McMinnville way to be the lager, to be adding to that, we've got to get creative, and I, I'll just share from my perspective, that, that Plan Three, from my perspective, hits so many of the buckets, that sequential UGB approach, and like I say, working, you know, as you, as, as we've been talking with, with Kevin, you know, I, I, we could be a pioneer, we've got the expertises to work with the state, and, and, and I'm, I'm getting a sense that if there are any ways, whether we go to Representative Noble, you know, we've just shown that we're good partners, and I can't think of a community that would be better to utilize that sequential UGB approach and, and see if there's a better way to go about doing this. Go ahead, Kelly.
I, I agree. I mean, there's risk in whatever we do, even doing nothing, and I, I think the risk there is probably worse than the, the other risks, so it just seems to me like, let's, you know, let's go forward. I think it's really important.
So again, I open it up for other councillors, many have weighed in. Remy, I know, you know, with you being on that Affordable Housing Committee and taking a great deal of, of having a great deal of passion as we go through this process, any other thoughts that you might have or directions that are coming to you?
Nothing that hasn't been said, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
But I, but I, but I support what generally is being said, that, that a, a pathway forward is necessary. I certainly can't see us going with option number four when, you know, I don't know about other councillors, I have at least three emails in my inbox this week regarding affordable housing and homelessness, and not that the two are always aligned, but certainly there is a, a, a long-term effect when there's continuously a lack of affordable housing. And while I have not been here as long as you, Mr. Mayor, or as Councillor Menke, I have been here long enough to see a lot of effort on the part of the planning department in doing a lot of these steps, and I can't imagine taking all of that work and essentially throwing it away at this point. So I, yeah, I'm kind of, I'm generally supportive of, of moving forward and with the staffing departments, or the planning departments' recommendation. Sorry if it just got loud, my dog just opened the door to my laundry room and the dryer's running, so. He's mastered doorknobs now. You're all, you're all learning my dog with me through this COVID rescue. So, yeah, I, I, option three does seem like the most reasonable pathway forward currently to me, that, that, that's the smartest use of the resources and resources already spent. Of course, I'm anxious about the things that were presented that would cause one to be anxious, so thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Council President Remy. Chris, I know you've been on board for, what, two and a half months, and these are kind of complicated and very in-depth areas that we're talking about. Perceptions that you might have or questions that you might have?
Don't have a lot of questions. My general perception, first off, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak, and thank you, Heather, for all the work that you're doing over in the planning department, we appreciate it, and thank you each councillor that actually turns on your camera so that I can see your facial reaction, so I get an idea of where you're standing and how you're feeling. It's the only interaction with you all that I get these days, thanks to COVID, so I'll just say thank you for doing that. I guess from my perspective, you know, I was, I only mentioned the, the lack of potential litigation, as play devil's advocate, I'm, I'm also not a real fan of doing nothing. I, I think that, you know, the way I see it, and, and I don't know if it's, it's a complete accuracy, I'm new in all of this, but the fact that LCD C wants to work with us to kind of walk through this process, in and of itself, having them kind of working with us is already getting a, a group on board with us to help us through the process, seems like it makes it kind of a no-brainer to me. You know, we're, we're taking the, that, that would be taking the cheapest route, and it would be assuming all have equal litigation costs associated with them. That would be the cheapest route, and anytime we can build, bring a partner with us as we're trying to go through the process, I think that's a wise idea to make it simpler. I really don't like this idea that we're having to do this every eight years. I think that's something that needs to be fleshed out and see if there's any way down the road that we can possibly see about making a change to that, or having our legislature work at making a change to that. That seems awful tight windows, we're going to be spending the rest of our lives doing nothing but urban, urban growth planning. That doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me, all, as important as planning is, and I'm 100% behind doing URA work, so I think that kind of covers the gamut of where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing, Chris. Adam, any thoughts from your perspective?
Yeah, first, just thank you to Heather and, and staff for putting this together. As much as I, I don't want to, you know, get right back into this after the UGB, I think you kind of shared, everybody's a little worn out on that, but looking at the options presented, definitely option three seems like the most viable, providing that, you know, DLCD wants to come along with us, and hopefully that we can get some funding from the state as well in the process. I, I definitely don't want to create a black hole that we're just throwing litigation costs into, so, you know, if, if we can, if we do get down that path where we're getting into a bunch of litigation, I'm definitely in favor of circling the wagons and, and coming back to it and seeing if we're still on the right path forward, so at this point in time with options presented, option three looks like the best, but if we're halfway into that and that's not panning out the way that we think it is today, then I have no problem calling an audible on that as well.
Thank you for those insights, Adam. Sal, I know you had some questions early on. Any other thoughts or directions from you as we have this discussion?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I, I agree with the, the comments that have been made, I, I just, again, feel that it's important that we really press the state for helping us to offset the costs that we've already sunk into this process, and, and the fact that we're piloting this new format, I think justifies us going for additional funding from the state. So other than that, I think option three is fine. The, the only comment I'd make, and it's probably not completely appropriate, but I guess one frustration that I have with our planning process, and hopefully this will improve it, is that I feel like we're not really building a lot of houses for the community that exists here and for the people that we say we're going through this process to help. I feel like we're building a lot of houses right now for people who are moving into the community from California, and while I appreciate, you know, new people coming in, you know, I just wonder if doing a lot more development of half-million-dollar homes, you know, really meets the goals that we are saying that we're trying to meet through this process, and really, that's my fear, is that, you know, that we're not accomplishing the affordable housing or that we're not going to accomplish the affordable housing that we're seeking, so I don't know that there's any kind of, you know.
So I don't know that there's any kind of, you know, reassurance that I can be given by anybody to this effect. But that's really the thing that's kind of weighing the most heavily on me, is that we expand to 40,000, but that 40,000, you know, becomes mostly, you know, just higher-end homes and the people who live and work here get priced out anyway.
Well, and I think that's an excellent point, Sal. You know, I live over in the Tall Oaks area and within the last four weeks, I think there are seven properties on Fellows, Goucher and that area that have come onto the market. And every, every single one of them, other than a duplex, it was, one of the county housing authority, a brick duplexes have pending sales within two to three weeks. That just shows the pent-up demand out there. And they're going, they're going for, as has been mentioned, prices are, they're bidding on these homes and getting more. The one piece, and I'll just share this anecdotally, you know, as we've gone through the opportunity at the end of the year to do interviewing for those that have committee assignments, I've probably done more interviews of individuals that want to serve on committees that haven't before. And the greater majority of them are under four to five years in the city, you know, which goes to that point that we're having an influx of people wanting to come to our community from outside of it. And we're not able to satisfy the needs of those that are working here and trying to grow their equity out of an apartment into something that they own. So I just throw that out. And Remy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, Sal, I don't think that, I think that there's two parts if you're looking for some assurances. You asked, one, are we actually building this product now? And two, how will we be assured of it? And Kelly and I were in a housing consortium meeting yesterday and we were asked about some of, some of the effects of some of the affordable housing measures we've taken right now to encourage affordable housing. And of course, we haven't had the development of a lot or much at all affordable housing. And I think in terms of your question of how will this guarantee it? Well, that, I mean, that is the critical, that's the, that's the critical piece of this, is that we are reactively trying to encourage people to create affordable housing with no buildable land supply and limited resources. Whereas having the opportunity to do a long-term planning, we can layer in methodologies that we know will create or demand affordable housing so that we're not only having half-million-dollar homes available on the market or, you know, when our lowest housing prices aren't above the affordable reach of many of our residents. And I think that's the crux is the time, the long-term planning.
Yeah, I think, so the housing production strategy that's built into House Bill 2003, so House Bill 2003, it's not only about the housing shortage, but it's about the affordable housing crisis in Oregon that's trying to address that. And the whole, I believe, the emphasis behind having cities update their HNA's and meet their needs and do it every eight years is to get past the fact of dialogue that the land use system is creating a supply issue, which is creating the affordable housing crisis, right? So if cities are doing their growth planning, we shouldn't have a land supply issue and we'll be able to get out of the deficit that we're in. The housing production strategy is really about, what are those other programs that cities are going to bring to bear to either, one, incentivize or two, and this is the most effective way to create affordable housing, is to mandate it in terms of affordable housing. So I've talked with you about, you know, how the city of Bend requires affordable housing as part of their annexation agreements. Once they took it out of the land use process and it was just a city council agreement with the developer, they wrote into it, in this area, you're going to create this much affordable housing. This percentage of it's going to meet this much area median income. They have programs they can bring to help developers do that, so it's more palatable. But that's how they're achieving it. And that, those are things we're going to have to start really thinking about as a community because if you build 50 homes and you have 200 households looking to buy a home, you're going to build into the 50 wealthiest households for that. That's just the reality of the market.
I mean, if I can just comment, the city that I was raised in, Boulder, Colorado, is one of the more gentrified cities in the country for a small town. And what they did was they set aside large amounts of public land that were then developed into affordable housing. And we don't have that type of land available. The county may, but we don't. So I don't, I honestly don't see how we get through the gentrification through, I mean, you know, people will say, well, the market says build more houses. And that's true, that would be a solution if there weren't this countervailing value of protecting farmland and keeping a small, walkable, dense city. And so I'm kind of inclined that you're probably right, Heather. I think that we should be looking at encouraging or requiring as a condition of building, you know, certain types of set-asides, or at least we should be thinking about that. And I think we also need to be thinking about growing up more, especially in the city core. So anyway, thank you. I didn't mean to hijack the conversation there.
Absolutely good comments, Sal. Remy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Sal. I wanted to just add a little historical context too, to what we've done just in the recent history in regards to that. So a few years ago, we did the McMinnville, then Affordable Housing Task Force, now Affordable Housing Committee, did try with the planning department to get the legislature to use McMinnville as a pilot project for inclusionary zoning, which would have, was not a copycat of what was happening in Bend or other areas. But it would have mandated a certain amount of developed housing, would have been mandated to remain at affordable housing level. And we also had a lot of conversations, not just internally, but also with the construction community. We looked at some other options for doing projects like that, like a construction excise tax and then creating a fund for that, which then would go back to help developers so they wouldn't be having a loss per se on creating those affordable housing units. And we put a tremendous amount of effort into all of those projects and we weren't able to move any of them forward. There was a tremendous, Heather mentioned earlier, some of the walls we've come up against. And I would say that, I mean, I don't know, 90 or 100% of the, maybe 90 because code revisions and ADU revisions seem to go through the process without an outcry. But pretty much every other tool we've tried to add to the tool chest or toolbox for the city has been met with a tremendous amount of pushback. And that's not contrary to anything you're saying, Counselor Peralta. That's just, that's just so that everybody is on this, everybody knows that these are some of the things that we have been attempting to do. And had we gotten that inclusionary zoning project through, then all of these recent developments that have happened out Baker Creek, all of them, what was the criteria? Was it 20% of the housing? Do you remember, Heather? 20%? So all of those would have been mandated to include 20% of the units that would have met the affordable housing criteria based on, based on the criteria set forth from the state referencing median family income, et cetera. So it's not just...
It was, it's not the subsidized housing, it was the market affordable housing that we were looking to mandate into inclusionary zoning.
Yeah, I think, as we also talked a great deal with Newburgh yesterday, and they actually have managed to pass a corporate excise tax. And I think we're just simply going to have to come to the conclusion that we are going to have to take some of these steps and some of them are going to be kind of rough steps to take. Obviously, we want to do public hearings and make everybody as well-informed as they can be. But, you know, as a council, we need to think, what can we do to improve this situation, even if it is kind of a tough thing for us to do?
Yeah, I mean, I guess my comment is that anything that we do to move the needle on affordable housing is, we need to accept that it's not going to be sufficient to meet the need.
Right.
That's the first...
Yeah, but it can help.
No, no, it's not that we shouldn't do it and we should do it, absolutely. But, but, I mean, the first point, we should just acknowledge right at the outset that we're not going to be able to meet the need through these mechanisms. And we'll do the best we can. It's unfortunate that that's the case. Anyway, this is a little bit far afield. But again, my main concern is that I'm just, I will just say that going forward, it'll be really hard for me to be a yes on some of the subdivisions that I've supported previously because I don't feel that they meet our community's need for housing. I feel like they meet the developers' need to maximize their investment on their property. And I think that the community is a community. I definitely am very sympathetic to the comments that Remy, or Counselor Drapkin and Heather have suggested, that we should be taking stronger positions to ensure that we can provide affordable housing in this community.
Yeah, and hopefully, I mean, most land in McMinnville is now entitled. So I'm trying to think if there's any land that's significantly not, so I don't get caught in the future. But, you know, most land that will go through a development process in the future will be coming in as an annexation into the city. So you will have the opportunity to get in front of that with your annexation agreements.
Well, I'd encourage the staff to drive a hard bargain.
I think you need to encourage the council to do that and to create that policy for staff to follow. They, that's where that change will have to originate, is with this body.
Absolutely. If it doesn't come from us...
Well, I mean, yeah, we can say that, but we have ordinances that come up to us from staff that come recommended, that tend to have a lot of support to begin with on the council. And so, I mean, I don't think the issue is a lack of appetite for reform on the council, you know, in some of these areas. I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just saying that I don't think the problem is that the council is unwilling to consider changes.
That's good to know.
I, yeah, I second what Kelly said, that's...
I feel, hey, look, I mean, I can point to some subdivisions where there have been contention and on some of these points and in defense of protecting, you know, elements that people feel are worth protecting in the community that were, you know, shut down pretty hard by the majority. So I don't, and so I don't think that the issue is a lack of appetite for reform, at least.
But I think, so Counselor Peralta, I think what we're diving into is when you, when you have, the difference between having policies that are adopted in advance that applications respond to, because we can only, we can only respond to the criteria we have once it's in a land use process.
I understand.
If we change policies to get to the place where we want to get to as a value system, then all developers have to meet those policies.
Right, but there's, every policy that we adopt is subject to interpretation. And so we've had conversations about, for example, transportation corridors. And my interpretation of those transportation corridors was a certain way in a quasi-judicial hearing. And others disagree. And that's fine, people can disagree about interpretations of the law and interpretations of administrative rules. And so I think, you know, in this kind of conversation, what I'm, what I'm struggling with a bit is the idea that, that there's not some existing flexibility or existing latitude in the ordinances that we have relative to previous projects. But look, I don't want to go back and fight previous battles. I don't think it's constructive for going forward. But I just want to say, yes, I'm on the same page with regard to this option three and doing more to bring in affordable housing.
Thank you, Sal. Well, I think, you know, in lieu of more discussion, I think staff is coming to us this evening and asking for a direction. And I think I've heard that option three, Heather, has been brought up by everyone on the call as the option that seems to have the most merit for where we are today. Chris?
Yeah, I just want to say, in the midst of all that discussion, I'd hate for Counselor Peralta's, and thank you for the opportunity again, Mayor, Counselor Peralta's suggestion that we need to find ways to get some support on funding, I'd hate to see that lost or dropped in the discussion. I think that was a very astute observation, particularly since we're going to be trailblazers.
Well, and I'll say one other piece. You know, I think we've got a unique situation in Representative Noble. Number one, he was a department head in the city as we were going through a lot of these discussions. And so he has insights that maybe no other would have. And he represents us in the House. And he, and so going back to Sal and what Chris says, I really think that we ought to get in front of him and talk through and get his input if we can find some different and unique ways of being able to have additional help in this process. Counsel President Drapkin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I just want to, again, encourage councilors to be active in those roles that when we're talking about engaging the legislature, that is, again, something that really is best originating at the council level with staff support. And so especially if Counselor Peralta and Counselor Chen with hearing that you both are really, that that's something that's important to you, I just encourage you to not shy away from taking on that work with the planning department and being, and the mayor and being proactive in that. But that, those types of, that's the, that's the not bimonthly meeting work that happens in between and it will be strong coming from, those conversations will be heard when they're coming from multiple councilors on the council.
Well put, Council President. Okay, any other comments? And if not, then I'll turn to Heather and see if you feel like you have gotten the direction needed from this discussion this evening.
I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. And I'd like to recognize our partner, Kevin Young. Any comments that you might have from listening to our discussions this evening, Kevin? Again, we appreciate you coming and being a part. And, you know, we've, we see you, we see you more often than we see others. So we thank you for that. But any comments that you might have?
Well, thanks for the opportunity. I always enjoy sitting in on these meetings. My background is in local government planning. So I've spent many, many an evening with the city council and planning commission. And you do a very nice job of running a meeting, I must say. I did want to say, in terms of the sequential UGB process, I don't think McMinnville will be alone in pursuing this. Frankly, with the new schedule we've got with, for HNA or housing capacity analysis updates, I have a feeling that a lot of local governments will be moving to this. And so we at our agency are very interested in making that program work. And I'm really excited about working with McMinnville to make this work. Obviously, I can't guarantee funding, but I can tell you that we are here to assist. So I'm excited.
Thank you for those words of encouragement, Kevin, and letting us kind of get a sense of the lay of the land, so to speak, throughout... of the lay of the land, so to speak, throughout the state of Oregon.
You're right.
And then I'm just going to turn to Jeff. Any other comments that you might have as city manager as we conclude our discussion this evening?
No, Mayor, but thank you for your attention and the great conversation and questions. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Well, again, Heather, you've got your direction, a very well-prepared preparation for our discussion tonight. I think every counselor has weighed in on this and given some direction, and we are, I think, unified in the things that we feel we need to move forward with. So with that, I'm just going to ask any counselor anything in conclusion before I conclude our discussion this evening. Seeing none, thank you so, so much. Let you get back to your families. Have a great evening. Stay safe, and we'll talk to everyone later. Thank you all.